We'll start the evening's life with prayer and pledge. Councilman Copeland, can you lead us in prayer, please?
Gracious Father, we thank you for your goodness. We thank you for your love and we thank you for your peace. Lord, we thank you for another opportunity for us to gather this evening to discuss the progress of our great city. Father, we ask of God as council members that you will give us the grace, understanding, wisdom, and foresight to lead and make decisions. We ask that you continue to grace and bless our city staff as they continue to lead the city on the day-to-day, that we will continue to progress. And, Lord, we ask that you touch every citizen that resides in the city of Saginaw and works in the city of Saginaw. As we continue to meet, as we continue to plan for a great comeback, as we continue to plan for great success for our great city, we want to just keep you at the forefront, that you will continue to lead us and guide us, and that we will follow your command. So that at the end of the day, you will get the glory. We pray this in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Council members, I need you to adjust your chairs. You got a payday, you got a new chair. So I need you to adjust the chair so that she don't fall out. I'd like to say good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
This is a public meeting, and the audience is asked to remain quiet and refrain from speaking, interruption, or otherwise disrupting the meeting. I will remind you, everyone, all council people, please silence your cell phones, please. You don't have to worry, I got a new one, so I don't need to take your phone from you. But I need you to silence them. Madam Clerk, can I get roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Lamar Sylvia?
Present.
Councilmember Williams?
Present.
Councilmember Bench is pre-excused. Mayor Potembaus?
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Present.
Councilmember Ostas?
Present.
Councilmember Flores?
Present.
Member Copeland?
Present.
Mayor Moore?
Present.
We have eight members present and one excused. You do have a call.
Thank you. Do we have any announcements?
Mayor, I do have one tonight. I'd like to remind everyone that the March 21st meeting, March 21st, the council meeting was scheduled to begin at noon for Student Government Day. However, Student Government Day has been canceled. Therefore, the council meeting will begin at its regular time of 6:30 PM. Mayor, that takes us to public hearings.
The public hearing is for property owners that received a single, they received a single law special assessment notice to state their objectives. Speakers are limited. Speakers must limit their remarks to the subject only. Begin by starting with your name, the property address. You, you will be limited to three minutes. Speakers should address the council as a whole. The objective will be to submit to the appropriate department for review and recommendations. Any support document must be handed to the city clerk. And the public hearing is not a question-and-answer period. This is not a question-and-answer period. Council members, this is just where people are stating their case. It is not a question-and-answer period.
Yeah, and the hearing is strictly on the 2022 single-lot assessment test.
And what the clerk said. So with that, I want to call for anyone, anyone that would like to come up and speak on this, please come up to the podium, state your name, your address, and you have three minutes. Is there anyone who wants to come?
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Matt Rogers and Amanda Emmett, 1400 Bernie Street. And we had our sidewalks repaired in the summer, and to my knowledge, it was done completely improperly. They had to come and do it twice. The second time, the sidewalks were done properly. I asked for the tree to be removed, which is the reason why my sidewalks were screwed up anyway. The tree was never removed.
I thought they said they were going to say.
They did say they were going to, three different people told me that it would be removed. But it never was removed. Also, I have a, I don't know, a three-foot, two-foot dip on the edge of the sidewalk that's never been filled, never been replaced. There's nothing there but dirt and two barrels. Also, the curb backing along my property, I now have about an 18-inch, you know, about that high from the sidewalk in my property that's not enclosed. I also have about a three-foot hill where the tree was that I have to constantly go up and down with the mower into that pit that's next to the tree, which I can't get around it, which is filled with gravel and cement that they dropped in there, just a pile of it. I do have pictures on my phone, I don't know if that helps anything right now, but as far as the payment, I don't really want to make payment until the job's complete and done properly.
Yeah, we still have like the orange barrels in our yard, you know, because they didn't get to finish it before.
I had three city engineers come out, and they all give me different answers, or I found no answers at all. And that's about all I have to say, thank you.
So you have the phone, you have the pictures on your phone.
I do.
Can you pull them off of your phone and submit them to the clerk's office? Is that not protocol, Madam Clerk?
He would like to do that, yes.
Right.
You can submit those tomorrow if you would like.
Okay.
Okay.
Because now you stated your objection in a timely manner, so.
Okay. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak at the public hearing? Yes, ma'am, come on down.
Felicia Hogan standing in for Ariel Hughes and Michael Hogan. You, you, the city head, we're just asking that you please consider the objection to the total cost of the sidewalk replacement when a grown tree, a grown city tree, has caused the sidewalk and driveway to be broken up across the whole parcel of the property. We have to have, have to remove tree roots from the dwelling's drains at least once a year, and this is an ongoing problem. We feel, we feel some responsibility being property owners, and also feel that the city of Saginaw has responsibility in this as well, due to the fact it's on city property. It is on the city, city street. And the tree roots are growing constantly and having to clean them out from the, from the drains as much as $300. And so we're asking for consideration to split, split the cost. I don't know if you want me to mention how much that is, but we're just wanting you to consider splitting that, that amount. And on the other hand, the city also cut down a tree on the side of the house that was out of the way and providing shade and was not problematic at all. We don't know what the purpose of cutting this tree down was for. It was a grown tree. Grown tree means big, and it provided a nice amount of shade for the house. So please consider our objection to the total cost and split the cost with us totaling Thank you for allowing us, the citizens, an opportunity to come forward with concerns during this time of great hardship. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you have any pictures or anything, please make sure you submit them to the clerk's office tomorrow.
Okay.
What's your address again?
3419 Roberts.
Okay.
I don't have any pictures though, but thanks.
So I'm saying, if you have anything you want to submit, please submit it to the clerk's office on tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
You're so welcome. Is there anybody else who would like to speak at the public hearing on the assessment? Is there anyone else who would like to speak for the public hearing on the assessment? Last and final time, is there anyone else who would like to speak at the, for the public hearing as it relates to assessment? Seeing no one, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved as second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, Madam Clerk?
Mayor, we are now at public input.
Welcome to those who have signed up to address the council tonight. Please speak slowly and clearly so that we don't miss what you're saying. You will be called to the podium by the clerk. Speakers, you have three minutes, limited time, which will be timed by our clerk. We are to remain courteous and respectful to the members of the public and to those watching on SGTV and to the council, so that we can give serious considerations to what your concerns are. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Our first speaker tonight is Yolanda Whitlow.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
To Mayor Brenda Moore, to Timothy Morales, City Manager, and to all the council members that is here on this evening, I am Pastor Yolanda Whitlow, and I am representing the Freedom Center International Ministries. We just purchased property located on 612 North Michigan Avenue, and we also purchased a school on 405 Hayes. Our goals, we wanted to come tonight just to present what our goals and what our vision is for the city of Saginaw and why we are here. We're planning to utilize our church building that we just purchased and our school for educational purposes, ministry, that's what create housing, jobs, community outreach, and so much more. Regarding education, I am a former educator, and also currently I have two schools that we have in the city of Detroit. Also, my experience of over 25-plus years, I know I don't look a day over 25, but my experience over 25 years, I have been in the educational field. I am very successful, I have been, in regards to pre-K all the way up to high school. So that's what our plan is. Our main focus also at this time of where we start off is to focus on our before and after-school programs, to give children and teenagers something to do, a place where they can come to and receive programs in that way as well. We will be dealing with adult classes, educating our parents, bringing that together between the parent and the student. We want to be calm and collaborative, partner with the city of Saginaw, to help to bring revitalization, restoration among our families and our community. That is the purpose of me coming on tonight, to introduce myself to you all. Thank you so much for this time, and I thank you. Blessings.
Thank you.
You said, what church did you purchase?
We purchased the old, I think the St. Andrews Church is, the address is 612 North Michigan Avenue.
Right there, where the school at?
Yes, the school is right next door. We purchased both facilities.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Is there any other questions for me?
I don't have any questions.
All right, thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Quinton Cooper.
I wanted to give her an applause, is that, is that not an order? I wanted to just clap, okay. So I appreciate you guys seeing us today, council, the entire council, I give, I want to say I give honor, because we're pastors, so it's hard to not say give honor. Mayor Brenda Moore, and of course, City Manager, I give honor to all of you guys. So I get to play kind of the bad guy today. I'm also representing Freedom Center International Ministries. We, as she said, we recently purchased the St. Andrews building, and, and the school attached the campus there. I think there was another gymnasium years ago there, but the, the grounds we purchased there, so. And of course, she kind of gave you the rundown on, on some of the plans that we're having, you know, as far as education, and just kind of buying housing in the community and rebuilding, and providing housing, providing things like that, not just school for, for children, but for adults, you know, academic and education, just providing all those things. Recently, we, we closed on the location, we had all the inspections and things done last year, we closed on this location, January, January 6th. At the closing, our realtor told us, you know, we've got everything scheduled to be transferred over into your name tomorrow, that was the 7th. As we were leaving, if you guys know, January 6th was a storm, a snowstorm came in, so it was really bad weather. We live in Bloomfield Hills, so we had to drive about an hour and a half, maybe an hour and 40 minutes, back that way, so we drove 40 all the way. It was about three hours, it was terrible. But anyway, so we ran into a snowstorm, and we couldn't get back here in time. So when we, we came back here for the first time, which was last week, we called consumers, and we called, of course, the city to come and turn out, they used to turn the utilities on and water and things like that. When the guys came out to turn the water on, they told us there was some issues that happened at 405 Hayes, where they broke the water main, and when they left our facility, water was pouring into the basement. That's, that's what he said to me. And so we began to investigate, and I know our time is limited, we began to investigate and look into it, and according to city records, 85,000 gallons flowed into our basement. And so we've been doing some talking with the superintendent and the assistant superintendent, Wayne Turnberger, and we haven't been successful. And so, of course, our plans are to merge and to get on board with the city and what you guys are doing in the city and what's happening in the communities. But of course, my first thought was, with the people that I've been dealing with, was how can we come on board with the city that won't take responsibility for their own actions? And it made me question, what are we really getting into here? Like, who are we partnering with? And so this is why we're coming before you, because I think there may be a remedy, now we're dealing with people that can make decisions. And so we want you guys to consider what we, what we're dealing with here. We're coming into the city to provide things, not to take anything away, but our facility was flooded with 85,000 gallons of water, and nothing works in the basement as we know it. And so this is something that we have to face in, in order to move forward. That's kind of all I have, I'm playing the bad guy today, and I hope we can kind of consider this and, and come on the same page, make this work. Perfect, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mayor, that now takes us to remarks of council.
Council members, as well, you have three minutes to present, and within your three minutes, please state everything that you need to state. Tonight, we will begin with Councilman Williams.
Good evening, everyone. First off, thank you for those that came forward for the public hearing, and thank you for our speakers, and welcome to Saginaw. Unfortunately, your welcome has not been great, and I'm praying we can do something about that. I want to stay tonight, just to, for everyone, for those that know, I've had 25, I'm in my 25th year in law enforcement. I believe in public safety. As of right now, I am attending the fire academy, and I would like to put out there that with my beliefs in public safety, I think that public safety and teachers, there's so many different careers, where there's an underappreciation for the things that public servants do. But I want to put out there that if you are a family member of someone who is a volunteer firefighter, do a little bit more for those people. They are not paid, and what they have to battle and go through is unbelievable. The things that I'm learning, I know that as a law enforcement personnel, as an officer, I can no longer sit in conversations and talk about firefighters like I have for so many years, like, we tend to do that. Police talk about firefighters, firefighters talk about police, it's one of those things. But I have a greater appreciation and respect for those that battle fires for us, because there are so many things that happen within a fire, and then there are lasting effects from fire. So if you have family members that are volunteer firefighters, please show your appreciation for them more than once a year, whatever it is you can do, because they are literally putting everything on the line to help out their community. That's all I have, man.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Scherzer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too want to say thank you to our public speakers for coming out today. It is an investment. St. Andrews has been vacant for a while, so I definitely appreciate, it's me, I'm talking. It's, I, I, it's always encouraging and great to hear and see individuals coming in, whether you live here or, you know, you don't, and you're just coming in and you believe in what Saginaw stands for, and you believe in our community, so I appreciate it, and hopefully we can come up with a remedy for you, or a solution, because what you're going to provide to the community is valued, and so much of an investment, especially into our youth. So definitely want to say happy birthday to Ms. Yolanda. I believe it was, what, yesterday?
Saturday.
Saturday. I always try to catch everybody's birthday, so if I never said happy birthday to you, let me just do it now across the table. And then just another shout-out to our public safety. Mayor, what Councilman Williams said, definitely valued in our community, we appreciate all the work you do, whether you're police or fire. I'm an advocate for public safety, so anytime that we can commend them for what they do, definitely appreciate it. I do want to share something about the SCDC, but I will wait until Board and Commission's report, so that's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have Councilman Ostas.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Welcome, everybody, to our council meeting tonight, and for everybody that's watching from home. Also, I just want to reiterate what my colleagues are saying up here, welcome to Saginaw without having to rehash everything, but welcome and thank you for everything that you're trying to do for our city. There is some things I do want to talk about tonight, and one of the things Councilman Copeland brought up at the last meeting was the CERA program for assistance with rent that still is going, and there's also rental assistance too, so that is online. If you need more information on that, please feel free to visit my Facebook page, get my phone number, and I'll help you maneuver the path. Also, I talk a lot about the Michigan Reconnect Program, which is free tuition for students in the two-year colleges, and Delta College does participate. The governor just did release that since that program was put into place, I believe last year, 91,000 students have taken advantage of this program. So it's a great, a great opportunity still for students to get free college for the first two years. And that is MI Reconnect, just in case anybody didn't catch that. Another program that the governor just put into place under the, with some ARPA funding is the Michigan Assistance Fund, and I did want to talk about this tonight. This is for mortgage delinquencies, defaults, foreclosures, loss of utilities, home, also some home energy services, and displacement of homeowners. This is at the Michigan.gov website slash M I H A F. There's a phone number, 844-756-4423. I do have some other notes here, who's eligible. These are homeowners that fall within the 150% of the area's median income. There are some links to the website there that will actually take you to the HUD tables that they're actually using, and from what I saw out there, a single family, a single person household, this would be 79,900 and under. So please get ahold of them if you're having a hard time with your mortgage and some other things that I mentioned, and maybe there could be some help for you. The maximum amount of the assistance is up to 25,000. And there's still our free COVID test kits at covidtests.gov, and there are four that are available for families. It's an easy process, you just basically click the link, puts it in the, in the cart, and complete the purchase. You don't need no credit cards or anything, and they'll arrive on your. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to read a certification of recognition that I'd submitted a few weeks ago to Mr. Julian Morris, who's in the crowd today for SWAG magazine. This is a little late, but I want to read this nonetheless. Whereas on behalf of the Saginaw City Council and the citizens of Saginaw, it is an honor and privilege to present this certification of recognition to Julian Morris and SWAG magazine for their first year of publication in the city of Saginaw. And whereas SWAG, which stands for Students with a Gift, is a teen magazine delivering the latest news and entertainment for teens' perspective. It's a first year of publication, SWAG has grown to include both middle and high school students as contributions to the magazine, and whereas the mission of SWAG is to engage students with the world around them and inspire them to join conversations about current events, we congratulate Mr. Morris and the contributors of SWAG for inspiring and encouraging other teens to find their purpose and use their gifts. Now, therewithfore, it be resolved that I, Brenda Mayor Moore, of the city of Saginaw, on behalf of our fellow council members and the citizens of the community, deem it an honor to recognize Mr. Julian Moore and SWAG magazine. On the special occasion of the first year anniversary, we hereby extend our appreciation of the powerful impact of SWAG magazine that has made on our community, and offer our best wishes to many more successful years in the future. Signed, Mayor Moore. And I would motion to suspend the rules for one minute for Mr. Morris to come up and receive this certification.
You're not in your regular order of business.
We can still motion for that.
I'll defer it to the attorney, I don't think it's proper.
I reviewed the rules, and that's appropriate.
I'm actually, I'm a little confused as to why this is under council remarks and wasn't under announcements that laudatories usually ask.
I agree. I talked with the clerk, clerk last meeting, and she said it would be under something separate, but I'm willing to motion for that.
I didn't hear what the attorney said, what did you say?
I wasn't certain why this is under council remarks and not why it wasn't under, I think it's announcements that our laudatories usually appear.
One of the things was, was this, is that this certificate has been ready. It was ready, the office, I did this, Mr. Flores asked me about it, and it was prepared. He was notified by phone, and, not by phone, I'm sorry, by email, to come and pick it up, and in discussion. We didn't want to start precedents, and so there are other people who asked me for certificates, and I'm sorry, can I keep?
You're fine, I've got it noted where he was with his times.
Okay, so what happened is that if we start doing it for everybody that wants a recognition, then we'll have a council room full of recognition. Now, anytime any council member asks me to do a certificate or recognition, I don't hesitate. The problem I have is, is when you come a week before, and the staff has to stop everything they're doing to prepare stuff. Mr. Morrison's recognition was ready, and when I spoke to Mr. Flores, I let him know that we can't start doing that, because if we do that, we've got a whole bunch of people in the city that are going to be upset, and I don't set precedents. Everybody gets treated the same way. So I don't know where you want to plug it in, he mentioned it to me last week, I acknowledged to him that we talked about this, and that we were not going to do it during a council meeting, and that he could have presented it after the council meeting, and so I'm not trying to start friction, not tonight, trust me, not tonight. But what I am going to say is this, is that we're not setting new rules as we go along. I can say that, because I am the mayor. So we will not be setting new rules as we go along. So Ms. Amy and Mr. Morris, I know I'm a Mr. Morris, Mr. Julie, I could do that, I couldn't remember the first name. We do have something for you, and I will make sure that you get it. We just got to figure out how, because I thought that you got it last week, and I found out you didn't. So apologies, charge it to my head, not to my heart, okay?
I'm sorry, Mayor, if I could interrupt?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt you, though. It's a point-of-order thing on the agenda when you're under council remarks. It's not appropriate to be making motions when it's just council remarks. That's a point of order on your agenda. Now, if this is something you want to handle under miscellaneous business, it can be handled then where motions are appropriate.
Okay. Okay.
As, as I stand, as parliamentarian, this is not an appropriate time for motions to come before council.
Uh, yeah, I'll wait till miscellaneous.
Correct, and I was just referring to the rules of order, and council remarks are limited to council remarks.
Yes, thank you, yes.
And there's no privileged motions for, to be able to be set during?
Not during this, no.
I'll wait for miscellaneous.
You have fifty seconds left.
Yeah, well, I, I'll spend the last fifty seconds to tell Mr. Moore, uh, Mr. Morris, I think that what you're doing right now is a cure towards the poverty and, um, deep complexity of the issues that we have in Saginaw that you have decided to pick up, be productive, inform people, and generate a entire publication with the help of your family and your friends to do something great. I think that if we have more people following your guidance and following your leadership, that we would have a better city. I think that this, uh, certification of recognition speaks to that. And I deeply admire you for what you're doing. And I hope that you continue to do that for years and years on end. And I hope you stick for the rest of the, uh, meeting, so I can give you this certification.
Got her in there.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Copeland.
All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for joining us today. Thank you for our speakers for the public hearing, as well as our public input. Um, happy Monday, it's another Monday in the land of the living. It's great to see you all this evening, um, even if I'm wearing a mask. It's just good to see. Um, I do want to start off, um, by starting with this quote. We're still celebrating Black History Month, um, but also, it's Love Month. Uh, it's Valentine's, we just celebrated Valentine's Day. I wanna say great job to Rachel and the staff of the SVRC, who hosted a Kids and Kisses Dance, um, this past Saturday, and it was just amazing. So, seeing so many little people out dancing, and didn't really know the music, but it was good, my, our children had a great time. And it's just something about children, how they don't know you, and they just play around. My son ran around with children, I don't even know if he'll ever see them again. But it was a good time to celebrate. And so, it made me think of this quote by Mother Teresa, "If you judge people, you have no time to love them." And right now, we need some love. We need some love to continue to go on within our community, within our families. Um, I encourage each of you all, take some time this week just to focus on love. If you have a quiet time, just think about love. Also, it is, we are preparing for Reading Month, which is next month. And I was contacted earlier this week regarding, um, some plans that some young people are having, and I was contacted at eight-something in the morning, and by the afternoon, they already had an event planned. And I'm more than sure you guys already know who I'm talking about. I'm talking about Mr. Julian Morris, who is hosting a Battle of the Books event for March twenty-fifth, March twenty-fifth at nine a.m. The SWAG magazine is having a Battle of the Books. More information will be available online. I love literacy, I'm currently a volunteer for the Reading Association for Saginaw County. Um, I do wanna encourage you all, if you all have some free time, just thirty minutes. They are looking for volunteers to read to young children. If you have thirty minutes, they provide all the information for you, but they just need more volunteers to read to our young people. Remember, two thousand nineteen, over seventy-five percent of our third graders were not at the reading level. At two years of a pandemic of online learning, we need help. So if you can, if you're free, contact the Read Association for Saginaw County. They're looking for volunteers, and I'm sure our young people would love to have, as our Mayor Pro Tim says, a mentor. So, if you can, uh, all that information can be found online. You all have an amazing, great, and blessed week.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Sylvia.
Good evening, everyone, how are you? I also just celebrated a birthday, I'm over twenty-one. Anyway, thank you, uh, for our speakers, uh, this evening. Uh, St. Andrews is my elementary school, so I think I dated myself, and that's all right, thank God I'm here.
Still over twenty-one?
Yeah, just a little bit. So, um, also, um, uh, thank you all, and hopefully that, uh, those issues can be resolved. Uh, hopefully, we can be of help, we don't know, but hopefully, we can. And, um, CAC, I just lost it, they are having a, uh, let me read it real quick. "We are working hard to address areas of poverty that are plaguing our communities. We are partnering with local financial institutions to provide solutions in the area of financial literacy. These are free classes, they will include an opportunity for a new bank account with small investments, giveaways, and opportunities to sharpen your skills on savings and investing." You can go to their website. They also, CAC is looking for help. They are actually hiring people in, um, general contractors, and we do know it's hard, but I'm putting it out there, and, uh, mechanical contractors, energy auditors. And, uh, Saginaw CAC is nine eight nine seven five three seven seven four one. You can always look that up. And with my other few minutes, I'd like to, um, just give a shout out, uh, to our Saginaw Police Department, they're doing a great job, even though sometime we get a couple of things where people are saying something didn't happen so right. And, um, I believe the chief is doing a fantastic job. Just wanna make sure we don't get some people, uh, our department, that is not gonna conduct business, uh, fairly and, uh, equally. We wanna make sure that continues. Um, we, we, I just wanna say, we have some great officers, and we don't want any of them to get tainted, that's the best way I can say that. Thank you very much, and you all have a beautiful day.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, we have Mayor Pro Tim Ball.
Thank you very much. Hey, I'd like to, uh, thank you guys very much for your contributions and your investment in the city of Saginaw. I hope that everything will get ironed out, we will solve these issues eventually. Um, when any, anybody come here and invest money in our community, with our youth and with our adults, we got to applaud them. But we can't applaud you in here in this meeting, but we definitely applaud you. Um, you know, uh, Councilman Williams was talking about the, uh, being a firefighter. Uh, my grandson just became a firefighter in Eckhart, Indiana. He got about a year on the job, and I was trying to get him to come back here to Saginaw, but, uh, after he saw the difference in the pay, it was, uh, it was a no-brainer. But, uh, you know, just thinking about, you know, and I too, since he had been a firefighter, I've been thinking about the dangers and stuff that's involved in that. You know, uh, the guy being a father himself, and, and now he's going in to chase these fires down, man, it's, uh, something to think about. You know, and I tip my hat to all the public servants for doing what you're doing for all of us, so thank you very much. Even, uh, my grandson's cousin back there, the police officer back there in the back, said, "Thank you, too." But, um, you know, I was just thinking about some of the, uh, it's Black History Month, and some of the, uh, black heroes and heroines that we had in the city. And, and sometimes, before I come to certain events, I like to, uh, ask their spirit to be with me when I come into the room. And today, I'd like to ask the spirit of Henry Marsh, Joe Stevens, Reuben Daniels, Mrs. Carter, Dr. Carter, the Goodjoe Brothers, Lou Oats, Gary Loester, uh, NAACP leaders, Joyce Seals, Wilma Hill, and even our Mayor Brendan Moore, uh, pioneering herself for being the first African-American, uh, president of the Michigan Municipal League in the city of Saginaw. I'd like to thank all you guys for your spirit and your dedication to what you do for the city and for our, our youth, 'cause when they see you do something, it makes them wanna do something even better. So thank you so much, Mayor.
You're so welcome.
That's all I gotta say, thank you.
So is my turn. First of all, good evening again. Um, I can't say it enough, my theme for this year is, it's a new season, it's a new day. Fresh anointing is coming our way, the spirit of power and prosperity. It's a new season, and it's coming for us.
That's right.
We're going to walk into this season, Saginaw, and if y'all not with me, you gonna get left behind. We're walking into the newness of what we need to be about. The council is walking into the newness of what we need to be about, and we need to be servants. We don't need for y'all to serve us, we need to serve you guys. So, my new people, my new family who has moved to Saginaw, welcome, welcome. We will help fix this problem, thank you, we will fix it, okay? It doesn't seem like it now, but hold on, I keep telling people, Saginaw is better than you ever, you just don't know. I get, I'm on fire when I talk about Saginaw, because Saginaw is a great place to live. We may not do everything the way that you guys wanted, but at least we're trying. Can we get some effort, what'd they say, can we get a, look, amen corner going now? Can we get an amen? Hmm? No, can we just get that? Our staff is phenomenal. I cannot say enough. I met with the governor on last Tuesday, and, you know, my favorite word to her always is, "We need money," and I, I fixed it this week, this time. I said, "We need money, but I need money for my workers. I need money for the workers. Our workers need some money." So, you may think, for those that don't know me, yeah, I got skin in the game. I said it July fifth, and I'm gonna keep telling y'all, I got skin in the game. So, we gonna take our city back. And the fire, the firemen, Reggie, Councilman Williams talked about it, Reggie, you should have been with us, me and Autumn and Bill, when we was dragging bodies out of the burning house. That was a joke in the half, 'cause I just fell on the floor. And they said crawl, and I'm like, crawl to where? I can't see where I'm going. So, you know what, firefighters, police officers, and staff, I appreciate you. If I never tell you again, I do appreciate you. Chief Ruth, I can call him any time of the night, I know he be getting mad, but he don't say nothing. And he gets right on it. Jeff Clarks, if my computer is broke, no problem, mayor, what you need? Thank you so much, I'm obedient. Next, Madam Cloak.
Uh, Mayor, we are now at reports from the city manager.
Thank you, so I, I first wanna mention that an event that, um, Yolanda Jones sent me, and Vicky Davis in my office did, uh, send you an update, but I did wanna mention it at the council meeting, too. The Saginaw Economic Development Corporation is hosting the Safe Certification Workshop to help individuals obtain the knowledge and training to properly handle food in the food service industry. The workshop is intended to support those working in the industry or looking to re-enter and have been adversely impacted by the COVID pandemic. The goal of the training is to create an opportunity for participants to obtain employment. The program appears, uh, to be very popular, as SCDC received more applications than spots available in the class. So potentially, there could be more classes in the future if this is successful. And the SCDC is using CARES grant funds to pay for the fees related to the course. So I think this is a benefit to our residents, as well as small businesses, a lot of small businesses, our restaurants. But I wanted to highlight this because, um, Ms. Jones and her staff have been working in SCDC pretty diligently to try to add benefits to that organization. And, um, I think this is an, just an example of them, uh, providing additional offerings and not work like business as usual, especially given the economic conditions and the pandemic. So, I thank Yolanda for working on that, and, uh, the director of the SCDC as well. We do have some updates that were asked at the last meeting. Councilwoman Scherzer asked about, uh, the numbers related to the marijuana establishment, since council approved recreational marijuana. The city clerk's office has received twenty-three applications for business licenses. Our application fee is four thousand dollars, so that's ninety-two thousand dollars in revenue. There have been fourteen provisional licenses approved, six provisional licenses extended, three business licenses issued, and three applications denied. The Planning Commission has, uh, reviewed twenty-seven site plans, and there are, out of those who have applied, there are twenty-two retail establishments and seven grow operations that are in the applications. So we, we, the other source of revenue in this case would be income tax. I don't think we have any details for income tax at this point. Uh, they're pretty recently opened, uh, the three facilities that are open. And the other source of revenue is, um, the state of Michigan sharing the, the revenue that they bring in. That is a, a formula allocation similar to, um, revenue sharing, so it, it goes based upon how many facilities you have. So we'll, we'll probably find out more about that. And finally, um, we had another request. Uh, Councilman Copeland asked a few, for a brief presentation on brownfield, um, the brownfield development tool and brownfield development, redevelopment authority. So, I asked Lori Brown, who's our finance director, to provide that update and some additional, uh, development tools that we have, and she's a great person to present on it. She was the assessor for us prior to being the, uh, finance director, and all of these typically run through the assessing department, so Lori.
Thanks, Tim. Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm just gonna run down quickly how the brownfield functions here at the city, and then, uh, cover a couple tax abatements. The brownfield redevelopment authority is a nine-member board. I serve as vice chair, Glenn Fitkin serves as chair. Yolanda is the staff person assigned to the board, and Tom Miller, Jr. at Saginaw Futures, the contact for developers, and he works closely with AKT to develop the plans. The basic goal of a brownfield, as you know, is to help the developer with the high costs associated with remediation and redevelopment of a site that has environmental issues. Tom mentioned at the last councilment meeting that grants and loans are available through the state or through the county land bank. Another component that a brownfield can include is the tax capture. That's kind of what we do in assessing. The tax capture allows the developer to be reimbursed for eligible environmental costs using their own property taxes. There are currently twelve brownfields in the city that have a local tax capture. A couple examples include the Michigan Works Building on Genesee and Jolt Credit Union on Washington, which was formerly Catholic, um, Federal Credit Union. The development occurring at Seven Hundred Court in the, is the most recent brownfield approved with the tax capture component. Each project has a plan that outlines the eligible activities and the total amount that's eligible for reimbursement. The developer submits proof of expenditures, and then tax capture works like this. Um, if the base value of the property was a hundred thousand before the improvement, and it, it's a million dollars afterwards, the developer would be eligible for reimbursement on that nine hundred thousand dollars that he pays taxes on. So he pays this full tax bill every year, um, and then annually, he's reimbursed for that capture piece. Plans are usually around thirty years. And so there's an annual reimbursement with the recoupment for the developer. Outside of a brownfield, there's a couple other tools that, um, are available. There's abatements. The most common one that you see come before you is an Oprah. There are currently eighteen Oprah certificates in the city. And Oprah, um, provides a tax exemption as opposed to an abatement, or as opposed to a tax capture, I'm sorry. And it's available for commercial properties that are in need of rehab. The exemption can be from one to twelve years, but Saginaw typically grants them for ten years. It's designed to give an, uh, a tax break on the value of the improvement. The land and the building before the improvement are taxed at the normal rate, but the development only pays, uh, school operating and state ed. So the value of that improvement's placed on a separate parcel, and it has a reduced millage rate, and it just pays school operating and state ed. And, uh, an Oprah has to, um, be a functionally obsolete, um, building based on age, condition, or blight. Some examples are the SVRC building, and the Bancroft and the Eddy buildings. Those were, all had Oprahs. And those were significant investments that may not have occurred without the tool of an Oprah. And finally, for industrial, uh, properties, there's the industrial facilities tax abatement. It's a certificate that's available for one to twelve years. Typically, we've granted them for twelve years, and we have twelve of them on the tax roll. And they pay half of all millages with the exception of state ed, which they have to pay the full state education tax. And a good example of a IFT is the Hospac Pickle Expansion on Hess Avenue. So that's kind of just a brief summary on brownfields and abatements. Did I see a question? Did I see a question?
Yes.
So, with, let's say, our guest who came and talked about the facility tonight, would that be an Oprah or a?
It would.
Or the development, Brownfield?
It would be most likely an Oprah if they're on the tax roll, but it sounds like they could be an exempt entity possibly. I'm not, I'm just guessing that, where they wouldn't pay taxes whatsoever.
Thank you.
If, in fact, they are a 501(c).
And then would I just be able to have a handout? I, I like numbers, but I, I need to look at it.
Yeah. Taxes are not that glamorous, and it gets hard to wrap your head around them. But I, I can get you something certainly, I'm sure. Councilman Astash?
Yes.
I thought you were gonna jump in and correct me at some point.
Well, thank you for coming and doing this for us, because you and I have had this conversation. And the Oprah was always interesting because there still is a tax that we're capturing there. It's just in a different fund. And then, like you said, the offset. So, because we all know our tax cap here in the city does affect the other parts of the general fund. So, thank you for bringing this to us.
You're welcome.
Good information. Thank you.
Could you explain to them what happened, where that separate fund goes?
The Brownfield capture?
Yes.
So, we're just the fiduciary. Yolanda kind of keeps track of all of that and the payouts and the reimbursements, but they basically pay their taxes to us. The part that's not captured, our treasurer would just disperse that to the entities. The piece that's captured, we would hold on to until March of the following year, and then we would reimburse the developer that piece that was captured.
But Saginaw only collects so many meals, right? And no part of that money goes to a pot where we don't have to count that as part of our...
Well, the capture piece, on the capture piece, basically, everybody is giving up the local tax. The entities don't get it. We're giving that up in exchange for the investment.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lori.
I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. How does one apply for the Oprah certification?
Typically, we would refer people to Saginaw Future. Tom Miller.
And what's the contact information for that?
Tom Miller Jr. Saginaw Future. I, I don't know the, his contact offhand. I'm sorry.
Okay.
You could, they could contact the, just the general Saginaw Future line, and they would refer it to Tom. Tom works with all the city development?
Do you have a question?
I do. With this development, so in our training for MML that our mayor encourages us to go to, we found that there was a presenter who works with the housing commission and the Brownfields in developing communities in their city, developing housing, not what we would deem affordable housing, but providing housing within the community. Is that something that we see within our community, or do we find that majority of the developers that we work with are more so developing, developing in areas that are affluent, and certain communities don't see the benefits of that within Saginaw?
I'm not quite.
And you don't have to answer, but if...
I think in, in the city of Saginaw, almost every development that, that we're getting has some kind of a development incentive, whether it's housing or business. The Oprah that Lori mentioned is obsolete property rehabilitation act, so that's usually an old building that is functionally obsolete. So, that's a lot of our rehabs that we have on our buildings. And sometimes, I guess it's up to the developer which one they want to pick, but if you think about any of our most recent developments in the city, even down to, I think we're issuing Oprahs on four-unit, five-unit apartments even.
Really?
Yes. Yeah. That's in the state, in the state law, and we have done that.
Yeah. It's for commercial properties, which includes commercial housing. So, it has to be five units or more, I believe.
And so, let me say this to you, Councilman Copeland. MML has a lot of referral sources, and yes, I bring them in here all the time, just so that they can tell us. When contractors come in and people come in, they're always fascinated with Saginaw. Fascinating and doing something is two different things to me. Okay? I don't need anybody fascinated with me right now. I need them to be willing workers and get in the trenches with us. So, I mean, you're going to a conference, I don't know if you're going, but anyways, there's gonna be some more announcements coming out on the MML webpage. Please pay attention to them, because they're talking about more things that are getting ready to come down the pipeline. That's why I try to keep you guys connected to MML, so that you know what's going on.
Thank you. I wasn't expecting this presentation, but thank you so much.
You're welcome.
You asked for it.
Yeah, I didn't think they were gonna give. But thank you.
Councilman Flores, did you want to say something?
Yeah, just two more questions. What type of documents would be applicable to, if they were to apply for an Oprah certification? What type of documents would they need to submit?
Well, they'd have to have a plan, costs. There's a, a whole list of items.
And it's on the form.
Yeah. And actually, the clerk's office receives the application, so there's a checklist.
The form should be available online if you want to look at it. I think they also have to have some kind of obsolete.
Yes.
What online address do we know?
It's on the city website.
On the city website? Great.
You can also check out on the State Tax Commission website, there's a property tax exemption page that has like FAQs for all of the exemptions. That might be useful, too.
Okay. And because we would be the establishing body to establish an Oprah area, are there any other areas in the city that you would find adequate to recommend to us to establish that way?
And you can, we can have an Oprah anywhere in the city.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are there any areas in the city that you would recommend that we would establish those?
Wherever somebody wants to invest and apply for the abatement.
So, everywhere?
Sure.
So, correct me if I'm wrong. Saginaw Future would know better than?
Right.
We would?
Well, generally, if, if they, if a developer contacts my office or someone interested in developing.
Right.
I would refer them to Tom.
That's what I thought.
But most of the developers, and we're, we do try to get new people in, but.
Yeah.
As you know, most of the developers have developed multiple properties here, so they, they do know the process pretty well. But typically, when we have additional ones coming in, they'll call the manager's office or they'll call the assessor just to ask about properties. But Lori's right. Anywhere in the city, we've had them from, I think, the apartment, probably five units on State Street near Bay. That's one that we've issued. And various buildings throughout the city have had whatever the developer deems is the best type of, of development tool. Old Towns had several on a lot of their buildings, especially the new development.
Yeah. I'm always concerned with people that do not know those avenues, that we speak about them in public and that they're able to learn information that we're able to give them.
It always very encourage people, as, as the mayor mentioned, the MML, but the MEDC has a lot of development information, and they have development boot camp type groups. And I know Councilman Astash has worked with one of our developers in the area to put on additional training for new developers or to get people more interested in that as well. So, there's a lot of people working on that. So, if you know people that are interested in that, have them reach out to the finance officer, manager's office. Councilman Astash, as I mentioned, has done a lot of work on it, so he knows a lot of the people who are, who are working on providing that additional training. And I think it was the one recently, it was just a few of the developers volunteered their time to have a class to tell people this is, these are some of the resources that are available.
And MEDC is Michigan Economic Development Corporation?
Correct.
And they can be reached at 888-522-0103. Great.
Thanks, Lori.
You're welcome.
Just real quick, I know we're going a little bit longer on this too, but is our redevelopment readiness city certification, does that play into any of this as well? I, I'm not sure if it does, and that's why I'm asking, because I was in advanced training with MML this weekend, and the lady that did the presentation, her and I got into another conversation, but.
To answer the question.
No, I don't know a lot about it yet, but I am really eager to learn more.
Yeah. Most of the development tools like Brownfield, and those are available in, in any city or county, but there are potential additional resources that are available to Saginaw because of, of us being redevelopment ready certified. And also, I think on the website, there's a business tab on the city's website that we're required to have to be redevelopment ready, community as well.
Okay, thanks.
You sneaking your ear? Thank you so much. Do we have any more questions of the city manager?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. In regards to the marijuana establishments, not like marijuana, just playing, you said it was three people. I'm sorry. Three entities that were denied. Can you tell me why, why they were denied?
I, I would refer to the clerk or one of our planning commission members, why they were denied. Can you answer that?
Thank you, Manager Morales. For various reasons, one that I can think of immediately is that they did not submit all the required documentation with their application, and they timely managed.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's pretty much.
That mostly for the, all three part?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Thank you. Is there any, any update on the motion made by Councilwoman Scherzer in bench about the premium pay for public individuals?
Yeah, we're working with a few of the unions on that right now.
Is that the complete update?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I do want to thank the city manager for getting me that presentation. I, I did receive my answer that day, so today was a lot more, and has my will starting. But I would ask that in the conversation about some of the developers who's been hosting this, these meetings, I don't know where they're hosted or who hosts them, or if it's through the MEDC, this SEDC, because I get their emails regarding their events. If we could just a little bit more marketing regarding this, because I have some young people in our area that are really serious about developing their community. And I think if we can share more of this, I think this would be a really good opportunity to see our own develop their own city.
Yeah, it, it, I just heard about it, so it wasn't a city event, so.
Gotcha.
It was, I think, organized by a particular group of developers. But I, I would encourage you to talk to Councilman Astash, because I think he did. He knows the, the individuals who offered to put it on and gave the classes, so he can probably provide more information for you.
And some of the stuff, Councilman Copeland, we gotta start reading. We gotta start looking at our webpage, okay? Because a lot of stuff is on the webpage. It'll tell you, and then, I think it's another section, I don't look at Facebook that much, but when I do, it's always what's happening. It's like, it tells us what's going on in our city. Okay? And when it's a private entity, it may not ever be on our page. You know what I'm saying? So, some of the stuff that's been going on, it's not been a city function, so it's not on our page. Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mayor, we are now at the consent agenda.
The consent agenda has been available at City Hall and on the city webpage and on SGTV, channel 191. I need a motion to accept a consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
So, moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any exceptions?
Yes. I want an explanation on number nine.
Number nine. Any more? There's a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk?
We have item number nine is approve the purchase with ABBA, a sole source, for $265,733 for the replacement of raw sewage pump number five for the Water and Wastewater Treatment Services Department, Wastewater Treatment Division. That was Mayor Pro Tem Balls.
Yeah, I'd like to know what type of pump this is, and I, I never known a pump to cost almost over a quarter million dollars, and I was wondering if it's just one pump, how big it is, and what does it do?
I don't know the exact size. I'm guessing, but four or 500 horse more than likely. This is a raw sewage pump. So, what this pump does is when the sewers drain, right, from a higher elevation to a lower, and the low point is at the bottom of the well. These pumps pump that raw sewage from the bottom of the well up to a high point. And then, from then on, through the rest of the process, it goes by gravity again. So, it's basically a big lift station. These pumps are, well, we did a lot of investigation to figure out, as it said in the CC, what our best option was. And there's a lot of things to be considered in what we're doing with this. As far as why it costs so much, everything is costing so much right now, and we can't afford not to repair the pump. It has to be in service. And we're having problems with some of these, these raw sewage pumps. So, I'll probably be bringing more to you as time goes by. But what I can tell you, let me take this mask off, excuse me. What I can tell you is, we looked at all of our options, including a whole new configuration. But one of the problems with a whole new configuration is that it takes a lot of time to get it done. And we want to minimize the time that this wet well is down, because if we have an event, we could have a real, literally, a real mess. Right? So, so partly, we're doing this because this option allows us to hook it up. It's basically a direct replacement. What they're doing is they're making, they're casting a new pump, casting new impellers, making all the new parts for a pump. It's basically a new pump based on the original design. And one of the things that causes this too, and it's true of water treatment as well as wastewater, because these are older, they no longer meet the current standards, so they don't build the pumps and the configurations that these pumps are in. So, I hope that explains some of what I'm, what's going on there. But it's to our benefit to have the pump built and the configuration that currently exists, so that we can get it installed relatively quickly.
Okay. And that way, you don't have to change the system around, you just replace it and replace the whole pump?
Right. It's a direct replacement, so you disconnect the pump that's there, motor and all of that, pull it all out, put the new one in, hook it up.
Are you gonna rebuild the old pump?
Yes.
Okay, good. That's, that's all I'm gonna know.
It's not rebuilt. This will be new.
Okay. How about the old pump? The one that failed?
No, that's toast.
Okay, it's toast. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So, and this money will be coming out of the water fund, it won't be coming out of the city funds, right?
It'd be coming out of, out of the sewer fund.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Need a motion?
I have another question. I'm sorry.
Need a motion before?
I'm sorry.
I move to approve consent agenda, item number nine.
Support.
It's been moved in support. Any more discussion? Any more discussion?
Yeah. How old is this pump?
1950.
Oh, wow. And would this be able to be used under the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act? That's currently going through the US, or I'm sorry, the Michigan state legislation?
I, maybe in the future, but right now, there is no funding available.
It would be of a dire need, that we would have to do it within a couple months?
Oh, yeah.
A couple days.
Yeah, we're coming up on, on wet season, you know? Spring's coming.
And we wouldn't be able to use this pump any longer than the spring of this year?
It doesn't work. It's gone. It's broken.
Okay.
Okay? This, this is a replacement of the existing. What happened is, in the CC, it talks about a nut. There's a nut on the bottom of the impeller, and the impeller's like a fan blade sort of that pushes the water, okay? That nut came off, and when it came off, it hit the impeller and was driven into the case of the pump and shattered it. So, you can't, and they're cast, you can't fix them. Sometimes you can braise them if it's minor, but this is not minor.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Yep.
You said the impeller hit the water?
The impeller hit the nut.
I'm, I'm joking with you. You said the nut hit the impeller and broke it, and you're gonna hit the water? I don't think he was pumping water.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
All those in favor, there's a motion on the floor. Needs to take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we are at boards, commission and committee reports.
Do I have any reports for any boards and commission?
I did, but the manager took care of it for me.
Oh, so he rained on your parade.
It's okay. I'm okay. It's okay.
Okay, anyone else want to report about any boards or commission meetings that they went to? Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
We are at appointment of board and commission members.
I need to, I need a motion to approve, to approve the one to four, leaving room for exceptions.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any exceptions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, Madam Clerk.
Our next order of business is resolutions. We have two of them tonight. Our first one is approving the cost agreement with Michigan Department of Transportation for the scour revetment of Genesee Avenue Bridge. So moved.
I need a motion to adopt.
Adopt.
Second.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's take call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, Madam Clerk.
Our second resolution tonight is approving the cost agreement with the Michigan Department of Transportation for the reconstruction of West Hollinew Avenue from Woodbridge Street to Hamilton Street and East Remington Street from Water Street to Washington Avenue.
Need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Report.
It's been moved in support. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, Madam Clerk.
We're at miscellaneous business, mayor.
I motion to suspend the rules for two minutes so Mr. Morse can come up and receive his certification.
You wouldn't need to suspend rules.
Yeah, not for that, was it?
Would he, they have to suspend rules or just take care of business?
I thought that's what we were waiting for.
Mr. Linas, who is?
I don't think you need to suspend the rules. I think you could do a motion to present this. Yes.
Motion to present the certification to Mr. Morse.
So moved.
Well, we don't need a motion for that, do we?
Well, you have it. Does she have a second?
No.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, Mr. Morse, can you please come front and center? Mommy, dad, you are welcome to come as well.
Please.
Stand right there at the podium, young man. We go get him ready because he go be in politics. Trust me, we gonna get him in politics.
Yeah, you want me to?
Mr. Flores.
He's very of politics, by the way.
Oh, yeah, already ready, didn't he? He could have just came.
Yeah. Thank you. Mr. Julian, you you didn't have to go back, sweetie. You can say something if you like.
Yes.
And I was expecting for you to come up here and shake all of our hands. Yeah, I'm gonna get you right. Come on up here, come around here and go through everybody. All council people, please stand. This is a presentation.
In front of the table.
It's all right. We got it, you guys.
All right, you got it. You can shake their hands if you want to. They're part of us.
We just want that. We that.
Thank you.
I love it.
You know what? You have to have humor in this. Because if you don't, you have breakdown. Seriously, you have breakdown. So with that, Madam Clerk, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Still under miscellaneous.
How some people?
I have a motion that I'd like to make.
Yeah, you need to get her attention. She run.
Yep.
So we got a motion on the floor.
He has a motion to make.
And I'm waiting. I mean, he didn't look up at me, but I was waiting. He said he had one and I'm waiting for him to tell me.
I don't believe he knows that.
Okay, well, he got to look up and look at me.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion. Great. So I'd like to allocate the ARPA funds to our first responders, police and fire in compliance with the final rules of ARPA, an additional six hour, $6 per hour from April of 2020 to August of 2022, not to exceed $13,000. And that all personnel must be currently employed, that they must not have three or more substantial discretionary actions, complaints against them in public, uh, that it might, it must not include the chief of police or deputy chief, that it may only include officers, it may include officers who lost their lives or were hospitalized during the period due to COVID infection or injuries to officials while on duty or any other circumstances that may not be to the fault of their own. And it may omit the hours of overtime, paid leave time, or standby except for qualified leave under the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund. That is my motion.
It's a motion on the floor. Do I get a second?
I'll check. Nothing. I'll second it, but I have a question.
There's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Discussion. Yes, sir.
I don't, I don't like the way they read. You said if if a person who had may have had some some disciplinary problems and they was working and the people that's not working there anymore, they can't get it even though they put the time in, I don't agree with that. I mean, if somebody took another job and went somewhere else and they did work for us for a certain length of time, I think they still deserve to get the pay. I mean, they was here, they took the risk. So why wouldn't they get the pay?
You're welcome to motion.
Yeah, so I'm, right, so I'm, I don't agree with that because I, anybody that did the work should get the pay if we're gonna approve something like this.
Anyone else? Yes, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I want, I was listening at the motion myself and it was so fast. But the thing I was looking at is if it, the motion can be looked at. So to make sure that we are following proper protocol and have it looked at by attorney, attorneys to make sure it's worded, to make sure it's worded right, make sure there's nothing that comes after that, like what Mr. Balls has said, you know, just so we can look at.
Correct. The first part of that would be that they have to be in compliance with the final rules of.
Okay, I, okay. Have to be in compliance. Okay.
Correct.
Do we have any more discussion?
Would we be able to hear from the manager on his, since he?
We're at discussion time.
Oh.
I'm gonna get to the city manager in a minute. Let me, let me get to, let me do this up here first, okay? Did you have?
No, I just wanted his suggestion.
Did you have something you want to say?
Yes, I did.
Councilman Ostag.
This was quite a long motion that I didn't even get a chance to read or digest. Could you read back some of the dollar amounts that you're proposing and how would that align with the formulas that we need to do?
Correct. For.
Mimicking what Councilwoman Lamar Sylvia is asking for.
Correct. So for the American Rescue Plan Act, it states that it cannot exceed $25,000, $25,000 per individual or $13 per hour for each individual for hours worked. This is taken from Flint, who had four days ago passed a motion similar. It would be additional six out, $6 per hour from the timeframes of April of 2020, which was a month after the pandemic had been announced by the federal government, up until August of 2022, which would be the six month timeframe for individuals coming onto the force, interacting with COVID positive individuals, and it would not exceed $13,000. Additionally, they must be currently employed. I can repeat the rest of it. They must not have three or more substantiated disciplinary actions, complaints by the public. And it must not include the chief of police or deputy chief of police. And it can include officers who had lost their lives or who were hospitalized, which I know of one who has been hospitalized during the period due to COVID infection or injury to officials. Any circumstance do not to the fault of their own, which means that they were on the job injured. And we can have the city attorney look over this information as well. It would omit hours of overtime worked because as we had heard from a police officer last meeting, they worked over 10,000 hours, 10,000 hours of overtime or paid leave or standby except for a qualified leave under the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund. So those are the specific parameters of what I'm motioning.
So city manager, correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding from reading the same documentation is, is that if you have gotten so many hours over, you're ineligible for the money. And we're not planning.
There there isn't an hour eligibility. There is, if it's still in the final rules when we looked at it before, there is an income, um, state or local income requirement where if an individual exceeds that income, there needs to be a special reason to go over that amount. So that that's something that would have to be looked at. And that's one of the reports we're running to see how many of our employees are within that range. And I think that is somewhere around $70,000. Is that right?
It was about eight, it was $82,000 to my understanding, putting in personal information. That was $82,000 to my understanding. Yet the justification can be made that because they were due to work overtime and that they were understaffed, that that justification can be cleared by the US Treasury Department.
It can be. It has to be certified by the chief administrative officer. I think one of the issues that with this is that it's, this motion to me is leaving out a lot of employees that were, a lot. I mean, all of our employees worked. And I understand the sacrifice that public safety employees make, even in the non-COVID times. But all of our departments that worked had high incidences of illness. I can not naming departments, but I can name you departments where 90% of the people were, did catch COVID when they were coming into work or when one individual in that department was COVID positive, we ended up having 10 or 15 people out. So all of our employees that worked were put at risk. And the, not just coming into the city or going out in public safety, our water, wastewater workers, particularly the maintenance and service division were required to go into homes at the very beginning of COVID, not knowing, not having any information either. So they were in that similar situation that public service, public safety was in just because of the governor's orders requiring water turn on. So we had a lot of employees that were in that same same boat that would be eligible.
Okay, thank you. I definitely, I just want to make sure that we're in the legal realm of everything because I definitely would like to see these young people get those dollars. And the other thing would be that, is it problematic at this time to give those specific persons monies and then look at the other persons at a later date? Or do this city manager, everyone has to be bundled together? Is it wrong or not to give give them these dollars? And then, you know, like you were saying, other, other workers should definitely get dollars also. But that'd be another motion at another time. So just want to know.
Well, I don't know if I'd classify it as right or wrong, but what would be, what would be the reason to not do it at the same time? I mean, if you, if council believes that that's, that the COVID risks warranted this level of premium pay, why would it not be for all, all employees that worked during the pandemic? We did have some employees that that were off for various reasons. So everybody didn't work the same hours. But some of our employees worked, were never off, for instance. And some were off for some periods of time through all departments, whether it was water, wastewater or public safety. Even we had people who were off for significant periods of time for various reasons.
Okay, so that would bring me to this one for your answer. So would it be reason reasonable to take that document that Mr. Flores had made a motion on to take that and tweak it and bring it back next meeting? So we can approve the workers getting some dollars?
Well, that would be up to city council, I would think, a question that you would have to would be how much would it cost? You know, right now, we still are, we just engaged Guide House. So we are, they're working on our revenue loss calculation right now.
Okay.
So I would, I think it would benefit council to know what is this program going to cost? So how much will, I know a goal of council is to grant dollars out.
Right.
If you have revenue loss and this, if this takes up a significant portion of money, it's going to impact your ability to to grant those funds either. So that we could give you a better idea about what.
After that. Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I do recall a motion several meetings ago that was approved by council to postpone premium pay indefinitely.
Those are non-public work.
No.
That was not.
City?
That was not.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry then.
Okay. Yes, Councilman Copeland.
Correct. Thanks.
So with the firm that we just recently contracted, and I believe in the presentation, they were, we, there was a discussion about their own calculation.
No.
What, well, wait, is that, that was in the presentation that they said they may do their own calculation? Now with that, should we wait to hear from this firm on their own calculation before we start moving dollars?
For revenue loss, the revenue.
Revenue loss for a premium pay.
The calculation you're talking about, Councilman, is is the revenue loss calculation, correct?
Yes, 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 yes.
Yes, I, that that would be my recommendation. I would wait till you have that information before you allocate funds. Really, and you're looking at the whole, rather than separating this out, one thing that, and I've talked to, we've talked to Guide House about it and we did talk to our, our previous consultant on our strategic planning session. We have the ARPA committee coming up as well.
Yes.
Right.
It would be beneficial for us to be able to tell them you would have potentially X number of dollars to allocate to these buckets. So I think we're looking at the revenue calculation as our, revenue loss calculation as our next step with Guide House. They're going to be working with the, with the ARPA committee as well. So it'd be helpful to be able to tell the group the financial situation with the grant funds as well.
Mr. Williams.
So what I'd say is probably going to be unpopular with certain public safety individuals. But working through the pandemic is literally what we signed up for when we took the job. Getting involved in hazardous situations is what public safety is all about. If we're going to give away any money, my suggestion would be to volunteer firefighters, the people who didn't receive anything during the pandemic, who still had to work, who still had, what we do, we get paid to do that. We literally get paid to come in and do the hard stuff that nobody else wants to do. So granted, I love money, just like anybody else. I think that officers and firefighters and public safety are definitely deserving, but it is what we get paid to do. And the people that don't get paid to do the same thing that we do, if we want to reward them or award them, I think that'd be great, but not for something that we already get money for.
Good night.
I'm next.
Go ahead.
Mr. Balls.
In the spirit of us not having all the numbers and having the ARPA committees have not met yet, I think that we should have tabled this until after that committee has met. And then we can start discussing, discussing if we want to give the firefighters or anybody else any money. I think we should wait until we find out how much money we got. And I would like to postpone your motion until later, until we find out more information. Because I think we jumping the gun. If we come out right now and newspapers say we're going to be giving everybody some money and we don't even know what they're going to get, I don't think that's a good idea right now. So I think that we need to wait until after the committees have met so we can make a more educational motion, you know, that's going to fit the amount of money that we got.
Point of information, real quick.
I think we need a second to.
I'm sorry, there was a motion, correct?
Yeah, I made a motion to postpone. Yeah, I made a motion to postpone.
Yeah, so-
It's been moved in second.
Now, is there any discussion for that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, real quick here, to the point that Councilmember Williams had made, we cannot provide volunteered or non-staff any premium pay, because we had tabled that indefinitely.
Well, then, that's what it is then.
But you had suggested that you give the money to them, so also, real quick here, point of personal information.
That's it, fuck me.
But that, I'm, I'm saying, I'm listening to my retort, I've sat and listened to everybody else, but I'm gonna speak what I have to say.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. One of the things is that we not gonna disrespect one another up here, okay?
Absolutely.
We not gonna do that. So all of the mumbling that you do under your breath, please keep that to yourself, and you keep saying point of privilege, that's all inappropriately used. That's not what that means, and that's not what that's for. So now, Mr. Flores, Councilman Flores, you can continue, but I need you to stop disrespecting others as well.
Thank you, Mayor. The premium pay is still able to be given to other individuals by a separate motion by anybody on council here. This does not limit the premium pay to the fire and, uh, police individuals. So we can continue to explore that. We do not need the guidance of Guide House, nor do we need the guidance of the committee. This is very clearly stated in the final rules, that they are able to get a premium pay with a justification given to the U.S. Treasury Department. We can go to the congressman's office, they have been willing and able to answer any questions, uh, but this is something that is set in the spirit of the law. Additionally, although they did sign up for putting themselves in, in risk of danger, they did not sign up for a pandemic that was unforeseen. The spirit of this legislation states that public individuals are to be given a premium pay while working through the pandemic. That is exactly the, the reason why we're even given this money. So those are reasons why, I believe, and this is something that's been talked about and debated for some time, but we, we need to let our fire and police know that they've done a great job keeping the city going, that they have worked above and beyond, upwards of ten thousand hours of overtime, I've done four ride-alongs with them, they deserve part of this premium pay that's been allocated by other cities in Michigan.
Can I call for the question, please?
We're gonna call for the vote. We have two motions on the floor.
Is, is that a motion you're calling for the vote?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Because you're in essence stopping debate, would that would require a second?
Yes, that's exactly what I'm doing. If I can get a second, thank you.
It's been moved in second. Let's call for the first vote. Madam Clerk?
Which is to postpone. Well, don't we have to vote on ending the- I'm sorry, yes.
We have to vote on-
To call the question. That's what you're gonna vote on first, is to end of the debate.
Right.
Thank you, Attorney Lusk.
All those in favor to ending and go and call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, now, we had two motions on the floor, we just have one to postpone?
Yes, that's what you're gonna address right now.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor to postpone this until we get some guides from, from the individuals who are working with us, Guiding House.
And the ARPA committee, and their committee.
So I'm calling for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes have it.
That's it.
So we're done.
Okay.
Everything else is tabled.
No, nothing's on the table.
Any other more, any other questions or comments?
Motion to adjourn.
Yes, ma'am.
Didn't we have a motion to adjourn? We didn't address that.
Well, we're getting ready to do-
There was.
There's a motion on the floor to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, have a good week.